Good afternoon, everyone. Just some clarification. For our two public hearings, which will begin in a few minutes, when we get to the public comment, anyone can come up and speak. You have three minutes, okay? If you want to speak for the regular meeting, which will be directly after our public hearing, please sign the book in the back. Kira, could you wave your hand? She has the book. If you want to speak at our regular meeting, which will begin after our two public hearings, please sign the book, okay? Thank you.
I want you to know, this round of access will be removed from the meeting. Everybody understand the rules. So let me please sit down and listen to everybody as they respond. Alright, so I would like to call for the budget hearing for the general fund and the general assistant fund. Proctor.
Trustee.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Darlene Reivers. Trustee Karma Karama. Vice President. Today's primary, make sure that it's happening. Alright, everybody, if you have any questions.
You have three minutes.
If anybody would like to speak, they can stand at the podium. About the general fund and general assistant fund. I want to address the body. You have three minutes to stand at the podium. I do want to address the body. You have three minutes. At the podium and address the body. That's what they say, the general fund and a general assistant fund.
We only have such a topic that we can talk about?
Yes, that's what this meeting is for. This meeting is a hearing for the budget. So if anybody got any comments, questions about the budget, stand at the podium and address the body. If not, we're going.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Roberts, I live in Lansing. And you probably noticed that there's a very professional looking budget. It's sixteen pages long. Numbers don't really... Yep, don't handle it through. But in this very professional looking budget, there's a lot of sugar in it. I bring your attention to page fifteen that describes a process that takes several months of public engagement, where the administration is supposed to seek out the feedback of the taxpayers before they publish the proposed budget. I'm not sure if that happened, or if it did happen. The public may have been on the payroll for the former governor.
Testing, testing. Okay, so the mics going in and out. If the mic go out, you should keep going, because we don't want to start over with your time.
I merely wanted to point out all the expenditures. Increasing from nineteen million, eight hundred eighty thousand dollars last year to thirty million, two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. This just already started. Page twenty-nine shows general fund to increase from twelve point two... Page forty-three shows the general assistance fund will increases from six point nine three to eighteen point two million. Page forty-eight shows the road and bridge fund. I'm sorry, I can't talk about that yet. But we're not allowed to ask why. So we must state that this has the appearance of the administration trying to grab as many tax dollars as possible righted on federal charges. Even Thornton County has the high property tax rates in okay. And though most of us... Contact increases this year. The budget starts out by us...
Somebody just hit the button. We need a live mic. Turn the mic back on. Turn the mic on, please. Turn the mic back on. Stop playing games.
Is the unexpected decrease in property tax revenue? I guess people are moving away from Thornton County's policy passing decisions. They do not assume that the FBI is running this is a significant challenge for the county administration. The question that many of us want to ask, that we're not allowed to ask, is why double spending if revenue is down?
Please get the mic on.
Alright, well, public comment says she got a lawsuit again. She was a victim. So this is nothing. This is just a play for your own time. So my name is Vivian Allen. I just vote, well, not vote, but I just say my property and revenue. So you are not going to steal my tax dollars. You are not. Look, my name is Vivian Allen. You don't lie to me. So therefore, I do not, I do not encourage this rate or anything that has to do with your administration. Your administration needs to be in jail. Y'all need to be in jail, because this is ridiculous. You have all these municipalities of other neighborhoods.
You got a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Can't get a mic system?
Everybody, we not gonna let you keep stealing our money. That's not gonna happen. You still her man, don't, you not gonna step in her way, don't tell her, babe. You not. So again, I just paid my taxes for my children and revenue. You are not stealing our money. I will make sure that the absentee hours, y'all ain't here, y'all need to stop this thing. Because what we not gonna do is, we not gonna be homeless behind her rent, not taxes. We not gonna get put on our property behind her rent, not taxes, because she want to move in. Because she want to go to hotel, that she can't afford to pay. How she can't afford to pay? Why don't you spend your money? Stop stealing ours. You make more than everybody in here. So stop stealing our money. Since you want me to shut up over here, why don't you step down right now?
Good evening, everyone. Except Tiffany, supported by my ass. Oh, my whole thing of it is, I live in a city that is part of Thornton Township. And it's okay if my mic is muted, because I can step away from the mic and still reach the room. I need to know, where is it in the, in the budget that we have to provide ID's, social security cards, and three months of back records just to receive general assistance, which is a general assistance fund that is supposed to be to help us keep our, our home amid this doggone incredible tax hike? Okay, that's my first thing. My second thing of it is, Thornton Township also includes Calumet City. And I call Calumet silly, see, Calumet silly, because they have the same silly tactics. They're under the same Thornton Township umbrella. They're doing the same thing. They're doing the same womanizing, hardy, Ditzmore, everybody that I did not name. All of this stuff is not in that budget. A kindergartner could create a doggone spreadsheet to make it look right. But as I was reviewing the budget myself, I wonder how someone got a whole background that they have been working for the township since nineteen oh one? Was it Jesus or somebody? He can't be Jesus or whatever. And this young man right here, according to, when we were at the last meeting, he had, I'm pointing at you, sir. I'm pointing at you, it's okay, you can point at me. It's okay, but it's too much disrespect. It's too much disrespect among the township. We need transparency. We need transparency. And if you didn't do anything wrong, Mayor Hinger, Supervisor Hinger, Supervisor Mayor, no, I'm not calling you out of your name. I'm calling you all of these names that you have yourself called. And I noticed that you have hurted yourself on several occasions, because one hit that I saw about the Tiffany Care Foundation was that you were soliciting donations from a foundation that could have been very profound. But then on the other end, you said that one of your trustees got this foundation in your name.
Alright, that's your time?
No, no, no.
We're here for the budget.
No, no.
Next resident, next resident. Alright, can you please remove yourself? Okay, next resident. Thank you so much for your time.
You get a nerve, you get a nerve, yeah.
I hadn't planned on saying anything here tonight. So many people think that their constitutional rights supersede my birthright. And that's never happened. The perfect opportunity, I'd like to see to my body about that.
Everybody, y'all have to be, say, let him speak. Don't let it fall, don't let it go. Everybody, you got to, everybody, let him speak. So let him say what he want to say. And if I got to, I'm not talking about your feet, okay? You can't hear the person as they're like, so let him speak. Alright, go ahead, sir.
Every budget, there comes up things that are not planned for. Last year, FEMA emergencies were not planned for. I asked...
Can you please, Madam President?
I asked FEMA, I asked them, what was the total amount of money that our super pair, our Thornton Township supervisor brought to our, to our community? And these are the facts, we did fact checks. General assistance for Thornton Township comes down to three hundred seventy-five million dollars. It's not in the budget. Is there, is there a place where when we put out the budget, you can also report things that weren't in the budget, but we received money for? Three hundred seventy-five million dollars came here to one, I don't know, raise your hands if you got some of that FEMA disaster money. Okay? Okay, nobody else, nobody else in here got a dollar from FEMA to help get their furnace fixed, their hot water thing, the bloody? Okay? The last thing I want to say, it never fails. When we were in the deficit with Zuparelli, people didn't come out like this. But the moment you find out, we got millions of dollars in each department, everybody wants to come out and try to find out, how can I get some of it, okay? One more thing. The Affordable Care Act. The Affordable Care Act. For people, for people that can't afford home internet service. The funds, the funds for cancer.
That's been five minutes, man, come on. That was five minutes. That was five minutes. That was five minutes.
Thank you.
How you getting him five? Everybody else get two minutes.
I'm gonna keep respect for you who are calling you Madam Supervisor. I would like to know, why is that you're not bus, uh, budgeting off of last year? Because there has not been anything that you have done to cause for us to have an increase on the budget. Next of all, I would like to know, what, pardon me? Okay, well, next of all, next of all, the budget should be left as it is, as right now, as of right now. Not this budget that you're trying to do. Because when I look at the budget, you have increased everything across the board. It's like you were trying to drain the money and just spread it out just to be unnecessarily used. My, my thing is this, you should have tabled this whole situation and given everybody a chance, in this room and everywhere else, a chance to amend what you have done. It is wrong. And you, you said that you have good business skills. Then you should take a look at the budget again. Because what you, I know you've done something in the back room. I know you don't pass it already. But I feel like this, all of you guys that sitting up there right now, I'm gonna make it my business to open my mouth wide and I'm gonna get your asses out of those seats for here.
My name is Sonia, I'm from Lansing. I've never really stand up and talk to this thing, so this is out of harmony, I'm gonna say right now, is, um, going over the budget, I was really upset with it in a lot of ways. And yes, there is increases in other things, like the roads and bridges, which I think that's in a whole different fund topic. But one of my biggest issues is the assessor's office. The assessor's office is very needed in the township. And no matter if you have a personal vendetta, personal issue or anything like that, which I don't know. I hear stories, I don't know what's going on. But the assessor's office is very important to the seniors. I'm already in an issue where I am.
Big laugh, hi.
I am, big laugh. I thought I am. But why is the assessor's office getting hit where you're decreasing their budget? There's no reason for it. You're decreasing our budget, but you're not decreasing any of the other budgets. And you have, you have, one time you had a hundred and eighty thousand people in town. And you have a decrease since the pandemic of fifty thousand people in this area. They're looking for more moves, and that is happening. And there's gonna be more people leaving because of the high tax in Cook County. And that's Cook County and there's other, and schools and everything else. But increasing the assessor's office, for whatever reason you have, is, is horrible. I mean, it's horrible in so many ways. She has to have a certain training to even give the assessors and understand what we have to do to decrease our taxes. And I could see that, but then, in your budget thing, in the introduction, it says you want to increase the assessor by ten percent in all the services. So how do you increase it by ten percent when you decrease her budget? I don't understand that. I, I, I thought it was a funny, so I would, I would like to actually have an answer. I have not met you, Tiffany. I've never met you, we have never personally met. But I wish you could just at least give us some answers versus just standing there and just staring at me and just listening.
In the last meeting, I talked about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of salary cuts. In the audits that I saw on the Illinois Comptroller website, somebody asked me where I get my data from. The Illinois Comptroller website. You can download this. So three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of salary cuts, but a five million dollar loan for operating expenses. And it ain't because of the construction neither. The five million dollars for construction was taken out in twenty fourteen. This is the loan that was taken out last year. And we keep asking about this. So please, do not confuse us.
I never thought I would get this opportunity. But first I want to say, I give you your respect. I want to thank all of you for coming out here. I want to thank you for coming out here. The second thing I want to say, every time you have a meeting, you don't never pray. Pray before you have a meeting.
Come on.
Because you know what? We all in this together. God has got to help us. Because people, okay, I'm not gonna say that. But God has to help us. We have to ask God to have mercy on, we're not allowed for it to be dragged down because certain people just want money for this and money for that. Help us. You are in a, a position that you not only can help black women, you're in a position where you can help all women, all men, if you would just do the right thing. That's our role. You don't have to be a smart person. You don't have to be a... Just ask God. First up, I'm gonna ask you this. Ask God to humble you. And you can look at me all mean at all you want. Ask God to humble you, because the road that you're going down is, not only is it gonna be bumpy, but it's gonna be a whole lot that's coming with it. Now, I'm not trying to sit up here to say anything to hurt you. I just want to tell the truth. You have people in here, a lot of seniors, they wait for you. When the meet's supposed to start at six, you start at seven. Let me, let me remind you, you are a public servant. And I'm just asking you, I'm asking, I'm asking you, ask God to help you. Ask Him to help you. You know what? Even after everything that's happened, it's not too late. My things happen, but it's not too late. If you do what's right, you know who my God is. He is a God of mercy. He will give you mercy. So don't sit up there and act like you don't hear what your heart is saying. Stone face, don't do that. Don't do that. Ask God to help you, because if you don't...
Come on.
If you don't... I'm gonna just leave it right there.
The wrath of God is coming.
Good afternoon, Mayor Supervisor and Board of Trustees. I'm Alden McDowell with the City of Markham. I'm the call of this budget. All of the trustees, the only thing I need to say to you all, remember, the voters will remember. You all have no right to sit in that seat and do what you're doing to a new taxpayer. Mayor Supervisor.
Alright, thank you all for your concerns. Thank you for addressing this body. Uh, now you will hear the truth as relates to the budget from myself and my administration. Now, you have to listen in order to learn, because right now, you guys have been led astray. You guys have been bamboozled, you guys have been hooded. So people, I told you that you have to listen. You gotta get both sides of the story. Y'all get one side of the story, and then you just get up there and talk and don't know what you're saying. So now, we're gonna show you. You asked for transparency? You have to pay attention to get transparency. So that's what we will produce this evening. So I thank you once again for coming out, but I need you guys to be quiet so you can hear from our staff as it relates to their department, the things they have been doing, the things they have been producing for the residents of Thornton Township. You guys are so lost as it relates to what is in the budget. Did you guys know that you have a... Did you guys know that you have a surplus at Thornton Township? Okay guys, you have to listen, like I sit in here and I listen to y'all, y'all know it's called a hearing, so they have to be quiet to hear you. So now I need you to be quiet to hear me, that's how this go. Other than you're gonna miss it, it's gonna go over your head. So please listen so you can hear our side and that way you get some transparency. You can only get transparency if you wanna hear another side of the story. Then you make a decision on what you believe. Thank you so much, and if you don't wanna hear, you can answer. So, thanks for me. You're gonna hear each department head as it relates to their department that you just stated. So you hear what we are referring at, you, the surplus that we have created here at Thornton Township. Uh, when I came on board, y'all had a deficit for several years. If y'all go onto Cook County website, you can read it for yourself and you will see what has been done at Thornton Township since we have came. As relates to our budget, we have two budgets, two budgets guys. In, in both budgets, we have a surplus of six billion dollars in the general, um, assistant, the general fund, and in the general assistant fund, we have a four million dollar surplus. And in Perry's Fund, which is the highway fund, we have, I think it's four hundred or Robert in, is it four hundred Robert in the highway? So Robert is the finance director, so he does the finance here. He is a man and he has a CPA, he been, I think thirteen years or so. So I want you guys to be able to listen to everybody and please don't interject so that you can hear it out, so you can understand what's going on. So Robert Hunt's gonna come up, uh, first, come on Robert, Robert will come first and it will go out each department as relates to the budget, and this is a budget hearing. Um, next we will hear from the house, um, department and then we will vote for the budget in the board meeting. But right now, this is nothing but that, a hearing, public hearing, to hear from the residents and you guys to hear from us, meaning Thornton Township's staff. Come on Robert. And if you guys will attend Township Talk, we break all this down, we go over this and I'm shocked that the media's here for this today, but they didn't come to Township Talk where we broke every single thing down, A to Z, and those that didn't understand, didn't know what to find out. We gave you, um, outlets to go to to check the information that we gave out. Budget has been out for over thirty days, so you guys have plenty, analyze it, go through it, um, sift through it and tell us what your opinion is. So Robert, you ready? I'm gonna give you this.
Mic check, mic check, mic check, prepare. Oh, the mic magically works. Uh, yes, now we're gonna first go over the, uh, first talk about what, where we at at the Thornton Township right now. So, uh, everyone should have a, um, this comparative analysis from twenty seventeen, I'm showing right here, they're gonna have it on screen too for everyone to look at. So this is gonna show a comparative analysis from twenty seventeen to twenty fourteen, I mean, I'm sorry, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. So we're right now, so, sorry, page, page one. Page one, everyone, page one, page one. Page one. Do everyone have this report? If you don't have it in your hand, it's also on the screen up there. And there's a screen back here too, so we're on page one. Alright, page two, page two. And it's on the screen also, we got the table of contents. On page two, we on page two. Page three, we on page three. Alright, taxes, I know, taxes paid to Thornton Township. On the next, is a simple tax bill for a household of a hundred and eighty dollars in South Island Hollow. This household has a home on the assumption and their tax bill for the year was five thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and ten cents. Five thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and ten cents, a total of thirteen, you know? Thirteen dollars and forty-three cents of five thousand nine hundred nine dollars. It's five percent of Thornton Township to support, I should. Um, another way to say, imagine you own a house in South Hollow and it's worth one hundred thirty thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. You get a break on your taxes, cause, oh, great. Now your total tax bill per year comes out to five thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and ten cents. That's what you owe for owning your house. Now part of the bill go Thornton Township. Three hundred thirteen dollars and forty-three cents. So a total, to- total, oh. Put it in a simpler term, for one, for every one dollar you paying, this is about five cents goes to Thornton Township. Um, page four.
Repeat that Robert, you say how much go Thornton Township? Just repeat it Robert, I'm listening. Robert, repeat it.
Resources. Uh, page four is the simple tax bill.
Okay, so what I'm trying to point out to you guys is Thornton Township only takes five cent of your tax dollars. Your tax levy comes from your city you live in. So if you live in Riverdale, if you live in Dalton, if you live in Harvey, if you live in Cayman City, if you live in Posen, wherever you live, that is where the bulk of your tax bill comes from. This is the part I tried to educate everybody on when we did it through, uh, Township Talk. So another part that your tax bill come from is your school board, your library board, your park board, they don't tell you this, so it's not all of Thornton Township. So you guys, I'm trying to educate you on something if you are listening. So the part, the part that comes from us, you are the owners, the part that comes from Thornton Township is five cent. So I'm trying to tell you that, that's what Robert's sitting there telling you as it relates to the bill, he's breaking it down to show you how the five cent comes to your, from your household, from your taxes. Alright, go ahead Robert.
Okay, uh, right now, um, page five, it does a breakdown of key, uh, financial terms. Uh, fund balance. In simple term, the fund balance for government agencies is like, is like the money left over in their accounts, how they have paid all their bills and expenses. Kinda like the left over cash you have in your wallet after you paid for everything you need. Change in fund balance. The change in fund balance for a year for government agencies is like checking, if you gained up with more money saved up or if they went into debt by comparing what they took in versus what they spent. Revenue, revenue is the money they collect from taxes, fees and other sources to pay for public services like roads, schools and healthcare. Expenses, expenses for government agencies are the money they spend on things like salaries, building roads, community events and other things that help run a township. Now I'm going to page, um, page six. This chart shows the change in fund balance for the general fund. In twenty seventeen, there was a negative two million two hundred six thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. In two thousand eighteen, there was a negative two million four hundred seven thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars. In twenty nineteen, there was a negative one million seven hundred ninety-four thousand and fifty-one dollars. In twenty twenty, there was a negative four million and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. In twenty twenty-one, there was a neg- one million nine hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety, ninety-one dollars. In twenty twenty-two, there was a negative, in, uh, change of fund balance, there was a negative four million five hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Twenty twenty-three, there was a surplus and it was a, it was a change of some, some, change in fund balance, there was a positive three one hundred ninety dollars, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. In twenty twenty-four, the change of fund balance was a positive six million one hundred fifty thousand nine hundred and eight dollars.
Okay, so what he just explained to you is the previous years y'all had a deficit. In the two years that I've been here as your supervisor, you have a surplus. So we showing you the numbers, it's in each budget and it's online and you can check it out. So we're gonna keep going, so I'm gonna show you the proof because everybody just is leading you guys and giving you information that's not true. So we here to set the record straight. Go ahead Robert, next slide.
For, that's for water and red, twenty seventeen, negative thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seven dollars, twenty, eighty-four thousand eight hundred, ten, positive six thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars, twenty twenty, there's three hundred seventy-seven thousand four hundred dollars. In one, there's a positive fifty-seven dollars, twenty, positive three hundred forty-two thousand, uh, twenty-seven dollars, twenty-three, there's eighty-five thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and two, nine hundred forty-four dollars. Okay, so now, uh, and where, where did these changes happen? Uh, we broke down all the information from our audit reports on page nine and ten for the general fund. Um, and then also, these are our different audit reports.
So as you can see, these are audited numbers, so that means they get checked, so you guys can check these numbers yourself and see where they came from, and that's why I say sometimes you just gotta get another side of the story to understand what's going on. Go to the next one Robert.
Okay, so now we can go to page twenty-three, uh, twenty-four, uh, page twenty-three or twenty-four. We have, um, it is, uh, page twenty-three, twenty-four, we have investment income, recap for the year.
Okay, if you're gonna keep talking out of time, you're gonna be asked to be removed. We're here to give our side as well. We sat here and listened to everybody, so you have to stop shouting out. Remove the person if they keep shouting out. We're here to be heard. So let him get his report out. He's the finance director, he's been here thirteen years, he knows, let him talk. Go ahead Robert.
We on page twenty, there's an investment income recap for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Fun investment in was seven hundred forty-three thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. The rolling investment income was sixty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars. Total investment income for the year was eight hundred five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. And when I say, um, that's interest we earn on our money, interest we have, most people know that, but some people don't. Monthly average investment. Yeah, five out, seventy-six dollars. You buy that a month, if you buy that by two, a monthly average, come with sixty thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
So to make sure people understand what he just said, we invest our money here at Thornton Township. We make sixty-seven thousand extra dollars just for investing our money off of interest. So that's how we able to do other programs, other projects, but if you give people an opportunity to show you their skills and what they are capable of, he's an actual CPA and he know what he is doing. He has a background in that, so thank you so much Robert, next slide.
Page, this is the, twenty of twenty-four. The general fund, twenty seventeen, our fund was seven billion twenty-two thousand four and forty-five dollars. In twenty eighteen, it decreased to fourteen million nine hundred fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. In twenty nineteen, it decreased. Hundred. Two. Twenty, the fund was decreased to eight million seven hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred in twenty seventeen, fund decreased to six million hundred seventy-one thousand thirty-two dollars. In twenty twenty-two, our fund balance decreased to two million two hundred twelve thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars. And twenty twenty, fund is increased to five billion four hundred eight thousand, twenty, twenty-four, our fund increased to eleven million five thousand and thirty-three dollars. Uh, that, that's a comparative analysis.
Right, you go over here and I'll understand. And they say so what? You just spoke, you just spoke really highly of what's going on here at Thornton Township, where we was in a deficit, what was in a surplus and. He just broke the numbers down to you, I know some of y'all didn't get it, but you can take this package home with you, study it, learn it, it's audited, ask somebody to have the finance background that way you better understand what is going on and not what's told to you as it relates to what's going on. So next, this is the budget, that's how I know you don't know what I'm talking about. It's not a old budget. Okay, you out of order, you out of order now. Alright, so next we're gonna have our department head speak as it relates to their department so you can understand what they've been doing with their department. Each department has increased, increase as it relates to people showing up and showing out and getting services due to us advertising here at Thornton Township. So first up, we have Tanika, she's general assistance department, Tanika's gonna talk to you what we do in GA, uh, so that means if you need help with your light, gas, water, mortgage, rental assistance, things of that nature is what she's gonna talk to. And then also, a young lady asked a question, love, you wrote it down, and she was asking why she have to give her social security card? Can you explain to them, get? What is needed, I know, I'm telling her some questions.
Good afternoon everyone, my name is Tanika Hughes, I've been with Thornton Township twenty-six years. I have been in the general assistance department as well as the assessors department, I pretty much work most departments in Thornton Township. What our job is in Thornton Township and in the general assistance department is we are to assist the residents with social agency services. That being, that general assistance is part of the budget as a separate line item, it has an own budget, from the state and from federal government. What happens is, we here at Thornton Township provide help to those who are in between incomes. That's for single individuals with no income, not eligible for any other government agency, such as public aid, unemployment, social security, disability, railroad, retirement pension plan. If you have an eighteen-year-old to sixty-five, they're eligible for general assistance with no income. Here's the thing, we service seventeen towns, we service and partnership with other townships such as Bloom, Bremen, Worth, Orland, as well as Rich Township. We all provide the same services. Some of us are need banks, some of us are flat grant. What we do is we provide as a need base, we help something towards their rent, something towards food, something towards their light and gas and something towards their clothing. We are partnership throughout the years with Salvation Army, Jewels, Waltz, any grocery store that Thornton Township, they will work with us. We also provide job training, we have provided clothes. This is in our history, if you go on the website, you could see some of the things that we have done in the past and what we'll continue to do in the future. Here also at Thornton Township, we provide, we also give care to our clients. And also, yes, I am, and we also provide services where they need mental health, medicine and anything of that nature. We also have emergency program for those who are in between incomes and guess what? Something happened, we're there to help you as well, but you do need to meet qualifications. There is a standard throughout the township throughout Illinois. You have to have an ID and be a resident of that township. You also have to have social security card and for those who applying for a certain program such as our emergency, yes, they have to have income. You also have to have social security card, and for those who applying for a certain program such as our emergency, yes, they have to have income. Because they qualify for one-time assistance in a twelve-month to eighteen-month period. Those who are regular say they lost their job and they don't qualify, they don't have any income, they get general assistance monthly. I will answer your questions after the meeting, okay? All right. Any other question in regards to general assistance, we are part of CED, we are partnered with CED, we have waited on six thousand people since October to now. That's a lot, that's a lot for my staff. My staff also, we were doing a rental program, as you all know, the one million dollar giveaway. But guess what, we gave over a hundred and fifty people rental assistance. Not all of them got three thousand, but all of them got something. And if they didn't qualify, it's because they didn't meet the standards, which has been verified lawyers and the state statute. We also do Salvation Army. My team came downstairs, if they have any question, they're here to answer them. We have Salvation Army for six, about twelve towns that we do for Salvation Army. We also do homeless prevention, which we received award, and that award says that one employee gave a half a million dollars away for people who was in need. Also, next to that program, we work with Catholic charities, we work with, besides homeless prevention, any other agency that we can partner with to help the residents of this township. So here's the thing, ladies and gentlemen, we're here to serve. We are social agencies, and if we can't help you, we refer you to other agencies that may be able to. But you have to meet the qualifications. So if you have any questions after this meeting, my staff is available upstairs and down to answer any questions. Thank you for letting me speak to you about what general system does, thank you.
So much, that's our GA department, so you got a better understanding of what we do. And they are in the budget, that's the general assistant budget. Okay, next, we're gonna have, yeah, okay, we're gonna have senior services. Uh, Ms. Marcia and Ms. Tamika, so they're gonna talk to you about what senior services does, the services you get and the dollars that's in the... So each of them are talking about their line items, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Marcia, I'm one of the managers in senior services. I primarily manage, um, the senior services department here in South Holland and the senior, our senior services department in Riverdale. We also have Tamika, she co-manages, uh, the senior services department along with me, and she primarily manages, um, senior services in Calumet City. In senior services, we offer, um, and rail services, uh, weekly activities, fifty-two weeks a year, for our seniors to, once they retire, remain engaged in the community, socialization activities, so they don't experience, um, isolation and loneliness. It is real. We have a, uh, a number of seniors that come out to, um, our biggest program, which is our lunch program. We serve lunches on average of about, out of fifty-two weeks a year, we serve lunches fifty to fifty-one weeks per year. Uh, for the first four months of, of twenty-twenty-four, we served, uh, one moment, please. For the first four months of this year, we have served, um, sixteen thousand lunches, um, for our seniors. Uh, we try our best and we have been able to, I've been here, um, approaching eleven years, keep our lunches at a minimum cost for our seniors, hot lunches, um, at a dollar and fifty cents. Um, we serve lunches out of two of our locations, Riverdale and, and Calumet City. Um, on average, over a year, we serve approximately forty-six to forty-eight thousand lunches per year. Uh, that is a lot of food, but that shows you where the need is for our seniors, a lot of our seniors, you know, they don't cook, uh, they can't get out. Um, you know, they're on, um, you know, strict budgets on social security, so, um, again, that's one of our largest programs. In addition to the lunch programs, to keep our seniors engaged and socializing with each other, uh, we plan trips and activities for our seniors. Uh, weekly, we have exercise classes at no cost to our seniors, um, three to four times a week. We have, um, clubs, uh, where they can come and socialize and, um, have different activities and games, Pinocchio Bongo, um, a beer whiskey club. We show movies of the week, all of these activities come at no cost to our seniors. Uh, we encourage you to come out and see what we do. I see a number of our seniors in the room, um, that come and enjoy our activities weekly. If you have any questions, uh, for myself, uh, you can give us a call or come here, Monday to Friday from nine until four. We'll be happy to sit with you, answer your questions, as long as you can show proof of residency, which is a driver's license or state ID, and you're sixty years or older, uh, you can join our senior services program. We also welcome, um, you know, suggestions for things that you would like to see as seniors in Thornton Township. Um, again, thank you, uh, for allowing me to speak, um, and come see what senior services is about. Uh, I guarantee you, uh, you will enjoy the services that we are able to offer, um, at minimum or no cost. Thank you so much. Uh, and if you have any questions afterwards, uh, senior services offices upstairs, or I'll stick around, uh, if you have any questions as it relates to senior services, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, Marcia, she covered everything for senior services. Thank you all for hearing us today, I really appreciate all of, just everyone for coming out, thank you so much. Okay, next, we have Youth and Family Services, Ms. Ebony, she's gonna talk to you about all the programs that we had, really been passing up a ton and make the youth have, uh, resources. One thing that I tried to initiate over there was penmanship, because we have a lot of youth that come apply here at Thornton Township, and they don't know how to sign their name. They don't even print their name, we ask for a signature. Also, uh, we have a lot of Hispanics that's moving in throughout our township, so we try to make sure we have bilingual class, offer Spanish, so that they can learn Spanish as well, meaning our youth. So these are some things that we implemented, and we got a lot of other things that she's... So, what's going on with the... Go ahead.
Good afternoon. All right, so like supervisor stated, my name is Evelyn Harman, I'm the manager of Youth and Family Services. Currently, act... Today is the last day for our after-school program. The after-school program has run from September, now, uh, with the after-school program, we had about forty to forty-five kids that were within the program. Program, three P M, seven P M, Monday through Friday. We also had kids who were up from school, provided transportation. Again, these are all free, through the residents that are in the program. Uh, again, at the after-school program, they get homework help, we have activities each day, they get snack, and they have a good time. We have field trips, uh, and the kids have a great time. We had a great field day yesterday for the end of the program. Moving forward for the summer, we will have a summer enrichment program, which is not anything new to Thornton Township. Again, a free program that we have, we're almost at capacity for the kids to start the program, that starts on June tenth. That program will run from Monday through Thursday, nine A M to four P M. Uh, we have field trips, we have about four field trips already planned for the summer, and that is from June until August. Um, besides those programs, we have Days in a Park. So I know some residents are very excited about Days in a Park, where Thornton Township goes to different parks within the seventeen municipalities, and we have a day of fun, free to the residents, right? So we have our DJ, we have bouncy houses, face painters, um, we have just fun food, all music, a good time for everyone to enjoy. Um, like supervisor stated, with her vision for our penmanship and, um, being bilingual and Spanish, all of those things, we have, we have to hire people to help us with that, that goes within the budget, right? So we have to make sure we want those type of programs for our kids, that we have to provide it within the budget. Um, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. So again, if anybody is interested and he will still be here, please sign up. Um, it went really well as it related to your kids for the after-school care, uh, but some of y'all just gotta come pick y'all kids up though. Um, it was over like seven P M. I just wanna make sure that everybody understand that all our programs here at Thornton Township is free. So when you go over the budget, the budget goes back into the community, to the people. That's the part that everybody's missing, and that's the part that they don't understand as it relates to the department heads. That's why they're speaking this evening, so you can understand what they do, how tax dollars are being spent and utilized, and what programs and people are benefiting from it, which is the residents. Uh, I love the senior service project, uh, pretty much they do every and anything, and all they wanna do is just have somewhere to go and something to do. I appreciate the senior service, uh, area, thank you. Next, we have Stan, Stan will speak to the outreach program, and he'll hit on the HAB program, which is our lawn care. So this is all our budget, so each department is speaking as it relates to the budget and what they do. So when you read the budget, you could say, oh, that's what that line item's for, but that's who, um, we're paying for. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. And you're honored to be here for this final face that I can see here. Uh, yes, Stan Brown, um, ten year here at Township and, uh, the ultimate journey. Uh, I actually work with a lot of the youth, uh, sixteen and up, uh, we got a lawn care program. Uh, also, we're combining, just trying to, you know, get back up on the people. With outreach program, ladies and gentlemen, we have, it's actually going out, going door to door, doctor. So, uh, shout out to all of you, we actually from building to door, uh, since I've been here, we share information in Thornton Township, actually homeless, uh, to seniors. Basically, we hit the door, the first thing they hear, we state our name, we let these individuals go, we ask for a well-being check. And, uh, we find ourselves sometimes sending the door a little too long, because I have, uh, seniors come to the door saying no one ever written a check on them, a well-being check. We didn't even know that even exists. Uh, we actually was able to help a lot of seniors, they asked if they need anything, uh, so that well-being check went off real good, ladies and gentlemen. So we get all seventeen with this faculty, and last and all the way back to Riverdale, uh, it's been a one heck of an experience. We have a lot of, it's actually that's a chance to connect with seniors, seniors have a chance to connect with youth. Uh, that's one of the things, uh, I know even myself, sometimes you walk down the street and you still have individuals that... They have a good... But now, it's seniors who fix today. I got singles, they wear hoodies. So we made a connection, so actually we have been talking to a lot of people, that's the thing, of what they, them are, and our seniors, that's the young people, where they been and where they're looking into. So because I was programming, ladies and gentlemen, we have made a lot of connections, we have took the word out about all the spectacular program that Township has, giving sessions to senior service. We actually give information out to individuals that didn't even know where they're seeing. It's been many of us that drove down one hundred and sixty-sixth Street, past this building, not knowing what goes on in there. So a lot of information that been triggered out to individuals to know what goes on in Thornton Township. We have heard, um, a lot of... Plus, it's a budget. But this place is set up for people, with people, working people. We're, we're working hard towards it, uh, it's a hurdle, it's there, the law's there for us to work on. Uh, we do need to do that in our lives, uh, we here in the township, individuals that running his operation, we come here to work. That's what we do, we come and work. Uh, we don't come here to do nothing else but to serve the residents. We are the service individuals, we work for the people, we know that. And we try very hard to make that happen, um, running for some of this here, tough, tough hurdles, but we gonna get past that. We just ask, ladies and gentlemen, just give us a chance to do what we come here to do. So with that being said, you can see how we, it's a heck of a program that's been on, uh, it's a lot of information that been triggered out of town seventeen municipality. And it's, it's enjoyable to see some individuals that probably never seen, it's kind of be back to see, hear about you, and to get a chance to see you in person. So it's a good, uh, good, good, good conversation going on here. So with that being said, I just want to touch a little bit on the senior lawn program. That program is somewhat on the background, uh, because, uh, Florida put a lot of good rain on it, and the grass got very, very, very long. It's a program that's still going to be six months. Definitely, definitely, don't want to go out there, try to get that grass, you have a chance for young people to step up and be a part of it. But I just ask that you gotta work with us, because, uh, the program is taking a little back step, because we got youngsters now, I think they got a little bit on their back, you know, when the grass out. And the hurdle is, we got something that's called, uh, background checks. So with that being said, ladies and gentlemen, we have to kind of work, we'll be scoring our youth, because our youth really need us to bring the light on, what we're doing. Also, we have youth that actually, they might stand out, they come to get a job, we're huge to them, a lot. It's working here, it's certainly what you gotta understand, can't pass something that early, I mean, try to come to the job, and maybe come to the board, but you can actually pass the test that's being asked of you. Uh, I had a couple of young people that were big children, uh, they went to Thorne High School, I guess some of them went to Thorne, they went to Thorne Ridge. They actually went off to college a couple of years ago, now they're back, super good, awesome. But you know what they tell me? What's the B? Don't you know where you're going, you're big or not? In Illinois? That's what goes on a lot, that's kind of hampering the operation, because a lot of them can't pass that, uh... This, this, this is a, it's a little tough on them, uh, the youngsters do very well in background checks, they passing everybody else up. We just deal with youngsters that basically do that party stuff. So with that being said, I just ask also that, that you give that program, have a good reason, give that opportunity to keep serving, because we enjoy serving, ladies and gentlemen, at all costs.
Okay, so you just heard from outreach and HAB, so if you are interested in, um, any information you just heard from the department heads, please reach out to them. Um, they will be here after the meeting. Next, we have food pantry, we're gonna have keep prices, speak to that. Uh, those numbers have increased as well, that just show you that so many people really, really need the food. If that's not loud enough, grab this mic.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to thank everybody for taking your time to come out. It's a lot of information we've given out, a lot of truths, a lot of lies. All I ever do to you, one is encourage them to do the research for yourselves, look the numbers up on the Illinois websites, and you can, uh, find out your truth. Uh, with keep prices, I had the opportunity to become the pantry manager, two years ago, for all the, all the, uh, people that had to be disrespectful about the thing before I took that job. So what we've, what we've done at the food pantry over two years is really nice. When I took over, we were, uh, spending approximately four to five thousand dollars a month in gas, cars. Uh, all those got cut off, certain loans got strapped, there's certain people and all that, that monthly fee is like twelve, fourteen, nine. There are a lot of things going on, a lot of people had cases and cases of chicken in their garages. Uh, we have taken the pantry from a hundred and fifty to two hundred boxes on our give-out day to four hundred. Uh, and then we produce, that's eight hundred boxes on a Wednesday alone. We also deliver to seniors, residents, and, and, and senior homes. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, it's homes and residents, Wednesday is our give-out day. We're doing, we're doing such great numbers monthly with the food boxes, we work to make the food boxes better. We work to make the food boxes better. We've also worked with Chicago Food Depository on some things that we don't like that they'll send to our communities. Anyway, and those who know that I do research, the numbers with the budgets, I would have never thought Thornton Township had a deficit. I'd never thought it because it was never talked about. Now, now, now we have, now we have a surplus, and it's in the back. There's a lot of great things going on in Thornton Township. A lot of times what I think though, going here is, so many people is hardened because of the doggy situation, that they're not even separating to, I'm doing the research on Thornton Township. Thornton Township, I didn't just go, I won't cut anybody off if I disagree with him, I just respect the same. Uh, Thornton Township is doing great financially. Right now, we are looking to get food trucks and grocery trucks for seniors that want to pick their own vegetables around to their homes. We're also looking into, and some people can't see the future. No, 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 I don't think, but we are looking into growing towns, but we can grow our own fruits and vegetables, you can look it up. It's a real thing, it's happening. We want to grow as much fruit and vegetable for our communities so that people can get it for free. Everyone is suffering, the milk, the cheese, the, uh, all the groceries, the gas. So we're doing a lot currently to even better the township. And when you think about your tax bill, I really realize that one five cent out of each dollar on your tax bill comes to Thornton Township. The rest is for the school boards, library boards, uh, Cook County itself, Ridge, Ridge and Row. Just a lot of other things. We, I was talking to a nice young lady earlier today. And, and she thought that the township controlled the money for the schools. And I said, "No, that's the school boards, that's their tax, that's what they do." So a lot of people have a misunderstanding of exactly what the township does. But when you look at the actual numbers, regardless of all this politics, this place is doing better than it was number-wise. It's ever hit on a lot of seniors. There's a lot of people that call me crying, I hear it all day, every day. So we're doing great, we're going to continue to do great. And always research for yourselves, because somebody might not like somebody for something that happened years ago. And they'll never say anything to about it. You have to find the information for yourselves, and that's my time. I thank you all just for listening and not disrupting, thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, so media team, can you put the video up for yourself? Media team. Okay, put the, put it up for me, please. So this is a video that we did in Township Talk, and we went over every single thing as it relates to what's going on here at the township. This is for department heads. So it's not accessory right now, this is department heads. So put my video up so I can go over, over what we need to go over, please. Alright, media team, are you ready? Alright, you can put the slide up so we can go over it? Okay, right now, I just, I just gave you the answer, so right now I'm gonna do my video. So now, here we go. So this is the, okay, you out of order. Y'all out of order, y'all out of order, okay. Y'all will be removed if you don't want to hear it. We sat here listening to you guys, we're still doing our reports. So stop, if I just told you who it is, that's what's next. So okay, play the video. Alright, so this is something that we put together for everybody. So it's the graph, it's the same thing that trustee, uh, Brown and everybody else went over. So it's basically the deficit versus the surplus. So we have a package as well, if you would like this information, that way you can educate yourself on what's going on here at Thornton Township. Like I said, people keep feeding you stuff, but y'all don't ever want to hear another side, and us show you actual truth. You ask for transparency, here it is. And then you can go and check everything that we speak of because they got out of any numbers. All we do is pull our numbers and show it to the public. We put out Township Talk, we try to break it down each and every month so you guys will know what's going on. And if she speaks out a lot one more time, you remove her. Like, I'm not gonna keep repeating myself, because I want to get through this so I can tell the people that do want to hear the information. Remove her. Alright, next, next slide. So this is the breakdown of, like I said, as you see at the top, the general fund, this is out of the numbers for those that want the information. And stop letting people feed you information and you'll get the truth for yourself. It's a lot of people that's disgruntled, that don't work here no longer, that has an attitude, but they riled y'all up, but didn't rile y'all up when they was here, and it was in a deficit. Now it's in a surplus, and now they got you here thinking people are doing something wrong. Everybody have been doing everything to up and up, and that's why you get outed. We have one financial award. So if we're doing bad, why we win awards? We're winning awards, we're doing, um, giveaways. We make sure that you know about the township. When we do the outreach program, and every single outreach program that we have done, we have increased the numbers here at Thornton Township. Every single department. So now they're getting more services than they ever have before. Half of the community, over eighty percent to be exact, did not know Thornton Township even existed. Didn't even know they could come here and get help. You know what I mean? People cry in G A department as it relates to men, "I ain't know what I was gonna do." But they got services, they got help. You know what I mean? People go to the food pantry or call my phone, crying because they got food for the week for their kids. This is what we do, this is the side they don't show you. Everybody want to show you negativity. Y'all gotta stop, life is short, live a positive life, stop breathing and getting into the chaos. Learn for yourself, breathe for yourself. Remove her, remove her, remove her, remove her. Like, you gotta go, we even want to keep doing that, you gotta go. So, so please go. So go ahead, you gotta go, you gotta go, you gotta go. We have an ordinance in place that says if you guys are disrupting, you will, you will be exited out of the building. You can't keep shouting out, you can't keep doing that, you can't keep doing that. So as I was stating, these are the facts, if anybody wanted the information, it's in your package. Next slide. So now I'm gonna break it down, like I told you guys that this was, uh, all Thornton Township with the taxes. The tax levies come from your cities, the cities and communities that you live in. So if you live in Dalton, Cayman City, Riverdale, Lansing, any of the seventeen communities, this is how your taxes get raised. Did you guys know that they raise your property taxes by four point nine nine percent without your consent? No one knew that, right? But this is what they're doing. So I'm gonna break it down because all we did was FOIA. You got to do the, the exact same thing, FOIA the information from that town that you live in, and you will get the truth for yourself. Stop letting people tell you that it's us and it's not. So play, play the video. Four ninety-nine, uh, four point nine nine versus five percent. The difference is when you get to the five percent, they gotta go out and tell the public. When you under that threshold, they can just raise it, that's what you don't know, doesn't it? So every year, your communities raise their tax levy, some by four point nine nine percent, some can do it less if they choose to, but this is how your tax dollars come in for that city. So for all those increases throughout Thornton Township that you got to see, it is from that municipality or that city. In or the park board, library board, the school board, all of those people combined makes up your tax levy. Next slide. So what is a tax levy? How do we utilize the tax levy in a city? And it's just for those that don't know what a true tax levy is. We utilize it for, next slide. It's just the definition of it. We use it for our police, our firemen, and public works, and then of course administration. All of the money that comes into that city or village, uh, comes out of the tax levy, and that's how they pay for their, um, administration, their salaries, their vehicles, whatever they got for that city. Next slide. So tax levy for Markham. Thank you for being here, all the women. This is their tax levy, so this is what she will vote on. So we FOIA'd it, and in the city of Markham, this is their tax levy for twenty eighteen, twelve point eight million. So we gonna see how they increases, you see the numbers before you. Next slide. Twenty nineteen, thirteen point five million. The older woman right there, so this is what she votes on. Next slide. Twenty twenty, thirteen point nine, oh y'all, good job for people raising taxes, okay. Uh, thirteen point nine, this is city of Markham. So you see where the money coming from as it relates to raising your property taxes. Next slide. Twenty twenty-one, fourteen point four. Twenty twenty-one, fourteen point four, city of Markham, next slide. Twenty twenty-two, fourteen, fourteen point six. You see it keep increasing? Next slide. Twenty twenty-three, fourteen point nine. Next slide. Now this is going for village of Dalton, where I am the mayor, so I put everybody in here. And just so you know how the tax levy is though, this is getting voted, you get voted on by your board. So twenty seventeen, who's at six point three, this village of Dalton. Next slide. Twenty eighteen, nine, nine million. You see it, village of Dalton. Next slide. Twenty nineteen, ten point three, this village of Dalton. So for all you that like to, uh, write stuff, go and FOIA our tax levy from the village of Dalton. You will see that the board of trustees all voted to increase your property taxes, right? But they pointing the finger at other people. Next slide. Twenty twenty, ten point three, village of Dalton, village of Dalton. Next slide. Twenty twenty-one, ten point six, village of Dalton. Next slide. Twenty twenty-two, eleven point one. Next slide. Twenty twenty-three, eleven point six. Next slide. Now we go to Hazercrest. So what I did was FOIA every single community, they gave me their tax levy that I have right here. You can do the same, and you gonna get the same as I give information. And I did not get, not one person, um, that I didn't put up here. They gave it to us, it's up here. If they did not give it to us, I'm gonna do a part two to it, so you can see if your city have raised your property taxes, which they all did. This is Hazercrest. Twenty eighteen, nine point two. Next slide. Twenty nineteen, nine point seven, two mil. Next slide. Twenty twenty-one, two point one. Next slide. Twenty twenty-two, next slide. But just let me pause, well, if you can go back, thank you. I want to pause right there for a minute to educate you on something. What politicians do, when y'all see them just, um, at the tax deal with a tax levy, is during the election year. The election year, they don't raise the taxes, so when they're at your doors, they can say, "I didn't raise your taxes." But then right when they get in office, the next year, they raise the property taxes, as you can see. So sometimes you'll see it the same, and you wonder why it's the same. It's not because they didn't need the money, it's because you had to re-elect them so they didn't raise the property taxes. So twenty twenty-two, uh, two point one, Dalton Park. Next slide. Twenty twenty-three, two point two. This Dalton Park district, remember I told you, everybody got their own tax levy. People just get confused and, and put them all together, but each government body raises your property taxes. Next slide. Alright, so that's all we got so far, so we'll do part two for the other cities. We waiting on Cayman City, we waiting on Riverdale, uh, we waiting on several other cities to, uh, produce their tax levies. Uh, you too can go and FOIA the tax levies, that way you will know what's going on when you stay in. So this QR code is so that you can go straight to the, uh, controller's office site, and that way you can see what we just showed you as well. Because we have to produce it to them, and that way you got facts and not fiction, because people just tell you stuff. But you can go research it, check it out, and you will have what we have for you. Okay, next is... Right now, we're not on that, we're talking about department heads because they're talking about their departments, so that's where we are. So next on here, we talked about the budget as it relates to each department head. And again, if anybody got any questions, concerns as it relates to those departments, you can see them after the meeting, they're here. You can sign up for any programs we have, and remember, everything is free here at Thornton Township. Um, next on here, we have the general fund. Robert, come on up so you can talk about the status. Come on up, Robert. Alright, media team, you ready? Okay, so all the little stuff, the eyes that's out there, people lying on us about this and that, we gonna show you truth and we gonna take you to the numbers. Because remember, women lie, men lie, numbers don't. You gotta check the numbers, you check the numbers, you will have the facts. This is facts versus fiction. Right now, this is true speech. So we're gonna show you the salaries that was here prior to me taking office, and then the things that got cut. So everybody running around here mad and telling the news this and that, but not giving the news facts. I wish the news would fact-check what's being said out here, and not just write everything somebody say just 'cause they say. That's not fair to myself, the board, or anybody for that matter. You should definitely fact-check because y'all supposed to be journalists, but, but y'all not journalists. So when Robert come back, we gonna go over the numbers so you will know the numbers to its extent as it relates to where we were, uh, and where we're going. There's a lot of people that used to work here keeping up chaos, but not telling you the truth of where they, uh, started at and how things came to be. Somehow, I think you got a better understanding of how your property taxes is calculated, uh, where it comes from, and where you're going. And if you want the information, please check it out. Um, another thing I want to talk about, the surplus. Um, before I got here, y'all was in a deficit as related to the five million dollars that you guys advocated for but never received. I know that Napoleon Harris did not, uh, vote to give Thornton Township the five million dollars. But during my tenure, meaning now, we now, uh, got the five million dollars in the budget. So these are things that I do that don't get produced, said to the public, but we got the five million dollars. And then another thing that is coming down the pipe hole that we just got was five hundred thousand dollars. We had got eight point, and the five hundred thousand dollars, um, we got in our bank account. That money did come in, um, last week, I believe. So these are things that the media, uh, the hate groups, uh, people don't tell you guys, but that's why I tell you, come get the message yourself, and then you will better understand what's going on here, because right now, people playing all the tricks and not giving you, uh, facts as it relates to what's truly going on. The township is actually doing really well. And we want to show you why so many people is, uh, running around telling lies because they no longer out here to do what they used to do, it's just nothing. So Robert has a whole breakdown for you, and he gonna be able to break it down and talk to you about, um, the decreases that we did. I think this was the first year, and then what my numbers were and what the previous supervisor numbers were. So we want you guys to understand. Okay, Robert, go ahead.
Alright, so, we make a more type, so I'm actually my upstairs here. They're heavy more type, but we do also have, um, some of the other. Hello, can you? Hello? Hello? Alright, so this, uh, this report is actually a hundred and forty-seven pages. We just printed out the first ten pages, um, about a hundred pages in the back, just basically all support. But, uh, right now, I'm listening on, uh, page one, I think, a couple of two pages. Uh, so now we're on page three. Uh, this is the actual savings that Thornton Township has had, has had in salaries. Thornton Township has saved.
Okay, so basically she's been removed from the meeting. So, okay, you could, she can, so she's been removed from the meeting. Again, you guys cannot be disorderly in the crowd. Then when somebody tell you to remove, you try to say something that's wrong. What's wrong is you being disorderly in the crowd. So yes, she's been removed from the meeting. Yes, she's been removed from the meeting. Okay, um, what's going on, guys? That's fine, but we have rules. We will. We will. Okay, if y'all gonna skip the discussion, y'all go to the back, so Robert can do his presentation. Okay, go ahead, Robert.
Twenty twenty-five budget, focusing on, uh, salaries. There's been a lot of comments on Facebook, and social media, and newspaper about the salaries, so we did a little, hang out on the salaries. This, this report is a hundred and forty-seven pages. Uh, we just, right now, we grabbed the first ten pages. Um, you can come, come to the office, or we get an email, or we on website, for the other hundred, over a hundred pages of support. Um, second page is the table of contents. Uh, page three. This is also on the screen. Actual savings and salaries. Thorin Township has saved two million, five hundred, ninety-five thousand, eighty-one dollars in salaries over the last two fiscal years. While continuing to provide service, is servicing more residents. Here's how Thorin Township calculated these savings. Three years, fiscal year two hundred, two thousand twenty-two, total salary was seven million, three hundred, eighteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Two years ago, fiscal year, fiscal year salaries for twenty twenty-three, the total salary was six million, five hundred, nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Savings compared to fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, that is seven hundred, ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That is a decrease of eleven percent. Last year, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, total salaries for the fiscal year was five million, five hundred, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty, fifty-five dollars. Savings compared, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, one million, seven hundred, ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. That is a decrease of twenty-five percent in salaries. Add these savings together, the total savings and salaries over the last two fiscal years was two million, five hundred, ninety-five thousand, and eighty-one dollars. The next page, short graph, for the actual salaries from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. In fiscal year two thousand seventeen, salary was four million, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. In fiscal year two thousand eighteen, salary was five million, one hundred, sixty-eight thousand, one hundred, thirty-five dollars. In twenty nineteen, salary was five million, two hundred, ninety-one thousand, four hundred, and sixty-two dollars. In twenty twenty, salary was six million, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. In twenty twenty-one, salary was six million, seven hundred, fifty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. In twenty twenty-two, salaries increased to seven million, three hundred, eighteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. In twenty twenty-three, salaries decreased to six million, five hundred, nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. And in fiscal year that just closed, salaries decreased by twenty-five percent again, at five million, five hundred, twenty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, page, page... Uh, page five is the details of how the, the numbers were added up. Uh, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four shows the total salary line items for each fiscal year. Uh, page six, um, kind of, uh, high level, plans to the rest of what's in there. Appropriations versus actual spending, why we reset the budget. Appropriations, plan. Appropriations for our plan, for how much we might need for different things over a period of time. Preparedness, we plan for both good and bad scenarios, to be ready for anything. This mean we might set aside more money than we actually need, just in case. Guidelines, an appropriation is a guide, not a rule. Just because we plan to spend a certain amount, doesn't mean we have to spend it all. Actual spending, real cost. Actual spending is the real amount of money we end up spending. Comparison, we compare what we actually spend to what we plan to spend. This helps us see if we are really staying on track. Adjust, if we spend less or more than we planned, we can adjust our future plans accordingly. Key points to emphasize, appropriations are just plan. Just because we plan to spend a certain amount, does not mean we have to spend it all. We should spend based on actual needs. Be flexible, it is important to be flexible. If we don't need to spend all the money we planned, we shouldn't. This helps save money. Preparedness, we plan for both the worst and best case scenarios, to be prepared for anything that might happen. Regular review, we should regularly check how our actual spending compares to our plan. This helps improve our future. Example, plan spending, appropriate. We plan to spend five hundred thousand in salaries for a new department. Actual spending, we find great employees who are willing to work for lower salaries, so we end up spending two hundred and fifty thousand. Outcome, we save two hundred and fifty thousand, which can be used for other needs or saved for future use. Page eight, we're highlighting, um, to, to, uh, to talk about the more recent narrative coming out. On page eight, ten of our salary line items compared to last year are the exact same. That's the administration department, the mayor's, uh, mayor compensation, assessor, department care relations, special service, youth and family service, DA, uh, DA, mayor compensation, Golden Bridge, administration salaries, and term Golden Bridge. What the amount we appropriated this year was the exact same amount we appropriated last year. There was no change for these ten line items. The next page, there was actually three line items in our budget where the salary actually did have a change. The senior department, on twenty twenty-four, the transportation department, and the department's community outreach and aid. On this chart, you see the three line items that actually did have a change when compared this year budget to last year. And it was actually, and it's the last page, so there's only, it was one budget, budget salary item that actually had a decrease from last year. And that was the Happy Department. So all salaries, so ten out of, so, so, just emphasizing, so page eight, ten of our salary budget line items are the exact same as it was appropriated for last year. Page nine, three items actually increased from our budget when compared to the last year budget we passed. And then on the last page, on page ten, one of our salary items actually decreased when compared this budget appropriated compared to last year. And that was the Happy Department. Again, page eleven to a hundred and forty-seven is actually the audit and financial reports and budgets that support this document. Uh, we're gonna print this tonight, we can't have that for a place.
Okay, thank you so much, Robert, you have seen. Thank you, thank you for all the information. Next, we gonna go, okay, give me my main front, go to the assessor, and then you have your question. Okay, assessor, you have a question? Do you have something?
Tax payers for the township, I need special for the township. Our justice and status has taken tax payers on the taxing process yet. That means we have an increase. We find where the increase is coming from. The department, if it's the special office, if it's a village nation, design here, which way that too. We also help you with property tax prevention, to help lower your tax. We help you with the appeal process, up here, to lower the property tax prevention rate. I even help you with getting money back.
Yeah.
This will be standard tax. My staff is here every day.
Every day.
They are here, working for you afterwards. They are here, working on Saturdays and Sundays, which day you got to pay for. But they do it because they lost the time share, they lost the taxpayer. Most of you have my number.
Yes.
You not have to reach me. If you have any questions, please call me, thank you.
Alright, um, let me ask a question. Now, we will hear from any board members if you have any questions.
Um, Mr. Hunt, double question real quick, just, basically, that's the last stuff we were talking about. Um, you know, so, some of the, you said, decreasing salaries, how much of that percentage wise, just that estimate came from people who were...
I appreciate you. Any kind, uh, Royal Argo.
I didn't have that.
Is that only part of the topic a lot of that, correct?
What you talking about the, what you talking about the percent, eleven percent decrease? Or it's twenty-five percent decrease?
Last year and the year before, it's like you were talking about how there were salaries that went down. But a lot of that would have to do with letting people go.
Oh, um, and it was, there's a, um, there's a couple of these that...
Oh, okay.
Um, I was saying, I don't, I, we can look at that, uh, definitely, definitely, so...
I won't mention my name, but then there were other people who got my statistics over past few years. Uh, I've gone by, kind of more specific question. Kind of going back to that same time period, does that include people who are getting paid out of grants on both sides? Meaning before, you're saying there was a decrease in the actual? So right now, today, as the grant money, people getting paid out of grants, that being accounted for in...
Yeah, so, so how do you...
To take that out and say, hey, look, we decreased salaries, but, sorry.
So, how do you calculate these numbers off of my actual...
We have already recorded, registered...
So then, it matter about what grant you came in. New, when we have salaries that's for, you know, grants that still salary is fixed on our, on our expenses. So I think that, so it's still, it's, it's still there. And, uh, when supervisor came in, there was a lot of different changes.
I'm sorry about that, Mariposa.
You get some, some new hires, some old hires, they changed, uh, they was paying our comp time, um, some stuff that, that they can, can go over, you know, if we go over in more detail, we just...
Some illegal stuff, that they was doing, illegal, they writing terms. And we don't do no more, and that's why everybody mad.
I mean, if you look on, if you look on page five, in twenty twenty-two, we had mayor compensation, where we actually spent out three hundred and thirty dollars in the mayor compensation. When you look at the last two years, it was zero. So right here on page five, of the report, you see the mayor compensation, they spent out three hundred and thirty dollars. That had nothing to do with cut, decrease, but that, that, that's part of that two forty-five million savings within the last two years. And, and on this report, you go line by line by line, I put each department, where the change is at. Yeah, there was a big decrease in the administration department. Uh, sometimes people shoot for a certain amount with admin, they want more to go into program. So the admin department went from one point five million to one point two. And right now, last year, the admin department's under the building. So that does, so that changed, other departments went up, but line by line on page five. And then we can see what's that different head count, we talking about specifically, but... Yeah, there was a decrease in the inspection, uh, yeah, but that's, and then, I guess, more moving forward.
Um, just a general question about the budget itself, is there a percentage raise that's in here, uh, for the employees?
Yeah, that, uh, great question. Uh, page eight, ten of these items on this thing is the exact same, no change from last year. We appropriated the exact same as we did last year, so, uh, for ten line items. Page three, where it talks about there's three departments where it is changed, where we put an increase on the budget from last year. That was the senior service department, the transportation, and community, and aid and outreach. And then actually, on page ten of ten, there was once, one department is actually a decrease in salary when compared this appropriation to last year appropriation.
No, but I'm asking, is there a percentage raise in the budget for the employees?
This, yeah, the same, that, that, this, everything is the same as last year. The last appropriation that we did last year, it's the same, it's the same.
A percentage raise as an example for the employees.
I guess, I guess what Robert explained is he was exact same from last year. So if it was in there last year, then that issue. So whatever that was, is still in there. I don't know, I didn't do the budget, so, department is budget, right? This is the department, I didn't do the budget. I said, I seen the budget, of course. So anyway, ask your, ask, ask your questions, you are just sitting what's on, so it's like, so ask your question, so we can move on. We got two more, two more meetings.
Is there, does the assessors office include that?
Yes, so, yes, okay, that's a great question, we're gonna trust you, my God. On page eight, you will see the assessor department appropriation is the exact same as last year. So everything's staying the same, the same, everything's staying the same, no change from the last year appropriation. Uh, I don't, I really don't know how to say it in another way, but for those ten departments, on page eight, Uh, I don't, I really don't know how to say it in another way, but for those ten departments on page eight, it is the exact same appropriation to budget from last year. Everything is the same, every, every cost increase, everything is the same for those ten, for those ten.
So last year, when there was a percentage raise that the employees got?
Yeah, they, they got cost of living, yes.
What was that?
Uh, I don't want you to say that, I don't. Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna say they got, everyone got cost of living, I think it's like, I don't know exactly, but it might have been.
Okay, okay, Rob, you asked the question. He says the exact same, so if everybody got two percent, one percent, cost of living, that's what it is. It's exact same from last year, not a change. What's your next question, or can we move on? All right, thank you, so it's the same. All right, so the next. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn this, uh, hearing, because we got another hearing to start next. Is there a motion to adjourn the, what is it? General fund and the general assistant, uh, public hearing? Is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, is there a second? It's been motioned second, please call them. It's about the next meeting, we got two more meetings. We not gonna do it, uh, play, we're gonna skip that, and we're gonna go straight into the meeting. Uh, I would like to call and order the budget hearing for the road and bridge fund. Uh, today is Friday, May thirty first, time is three nineteen P M. Please call them. Trustee Jones, trustee Gonzalez, trustee Gray Everett, trustee Carla, supervisor Henry, motion please. Right, if anybody got any questions, comments, or, um, highway commission budget, please, to the board. All right, here now, next, Pepe, you got anything for your department, would you like to make a statement?
I used to only have one, I used to only have one full-time employee and one part-time employee. And since highway departments are one of the most dangerous jobs in the country, I hired somebody to make sure they were them. You know, and, uh, when I first got into this job, uh, I had no trucks to rent, no money in the account, everything. And Frank Zuccerelli helped me out by hand, buy me a truck, okay? And then there Frank helped me get grant money. And out of twenty seven roads I got, I already repaid twenty of them, okay? And Frank helped me, and now Tiffany, and Tiffany helped me get two hundred thousand last year. She's working there and getting four hundred thousand right now. And that's finished all our roads, and I asked, I talked to all the mayors, and I said, I'm getting down these roads, I'm making them beautiful out there. I says, any city wanna take over these roads? Well, they don't want it, because it's too expensive for them to take care of the roads that it was cost us. But I just say, if we all work together, and if people got any questions, they can always ask me after, if we work together, we get things done. And if you got any questions, you can ask me after the meeting, and I'll be here and I'll answer anything you want, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, and as he stated, we bought money in in my first year. We got grant money for the highway commission, which was two hundred K, um, and we got a million dollar grant last year for, um, the youth. So it was at rescue, and that went really well, too. We gave over eighty scholarships to our youth throughout Ford Township. We gave them up to twenty five hundred, three thousand dollars a piece, and they were able to put that to tuition, their books, and it really went well. Uh, we also was able to send kids to E M T school. We had twelve in and twelve graduating out of the program. They are now firemen, firewomen, but these are the things they don't tell you. They tell you what they want you to be mad about, but that ain't the truth. So that's why I tell people to come and get the facts, so you can learn what we do here at Ford Township, which is a whole lot, and we do a lot of free services. But y'all just attack people for no reason with no facts. I wish you just, uh, open your ears tonight, I hope that really helped. Uh, next, we are going to, is there a motion to approve or adopt, um, the twenty twenty four slash twenty twenty five road and bridge fund budget? Is there a motion? How do you supersede something that we didn't even motion out yet? It don't even work like that, you don't even know Robert rules or hold on. Okay, oh, okay, so you. I, again, like I just stated, what are you superseding, there's no motion on the floor. You did, you said you wanna supersede, so again, somebody lowed your lips, you don't know how to use the terminology. No, I did not motion anything, so you have to, y'all have to learn, y'all, again, again, me and my board is having a discussion, please. And I'm trying to teach you the rules, it don't work like that, you can't supersede something that's not on the table, again. No, it's not, no motion, I asked for the motion as I always do. Okay, go ahead, what's your motion? Okay, let's see if you get a second, is there a second? All right, he, he said, all right, let's see if they pass. So you don't want highway, um, commission to operate with fun, so you on the table, so you not have no budget. Make that make sense. Y'all are tired of reading this, and you know, thirty days out, and it's like, what are we doing? But okay, uh, call them. Trustee Carla. See Gray Everett? Going to table. Trustee Carla, wait, um, Gonzalez? Trustee Jones? Supervisor Henry? Motion failed. All right, can I have a motion to pass the road and bridge budget ordinance number twenty four dash zero zero four? Is there a motion? Well, who knows, not that, no, I'm sorry. Uh, just road and bridge fund budget, is there a motion? Is there a second? I said any. All right, it's been motioned in second, call them. Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Carla? Trustee Jones? Supervisor Henry? Same, motion failed. I don't know if y'all heard him, but he said basically he about to lay off his guys, he was upset about, um, not passing, so. That's how it go when you don't pass money. So that's what he just stated, I'm just repeating what he said for those that can hear in the back, so. All right, so we have trustees, they said they gotta reconsider, so we have to have a motion to reconsider. Is there a motion to re- reconsider? So there's yes, is there, is there a second for the motion, darling? A motion to reconsider, they said they ought to reconsider. They motioned in second to reconsider, call them. Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee. All right, look, y'all cannot come here intimidating people, get in people's face. Gonna move him now. Gonna move him now. Gonna move him now, yeah. Y'all can say no, you know, but you see you intimidating them here all in this place. Get out, get out. All right, here, call them. Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Carla? Trustee Carla? Trustee Jones? Trustee Jones? Trustee, supervisor, motion passed. All right, can I have a motion to pass, um, the adoption of twenty twenty four slash twenty twenty five road and bridge fund budget? Is there a motion? Is there a motion to pass the budget? So is that second? Jim's second, is there a motion second, call them. Trustee, trustee Jones? Trustee Gray Everett? This is what they, the budget. The road and bridge budget, which is. Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Carla? Trustee Carla? Okay, next, we have our regular scheduled board meeting. Uh, I would like to call and order the meeting of the township board of trustees today. Okay, I'll stick motion to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn? Yes, again, yes. Is there a motion to adjourn? Yes, is there a second? Is there a second to adjourn? Okay, any motion in second to adjourn, please call them. Trustee Carla? Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Jones? To adjourn. Supervisor Henry, motion passed, meeting adjourned at three thirty three. Okay, I would like to, um, call to order, Ford Township Board of Trustees, um, meeting, and today is May thirty first, time is three thirty four P M, please call them. Jones? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Carla, supervisor Henry? All right, this is our regular scheduled board meeting, uh, if anybody would like to, trust, money, wait, we should have a sheet, oh, she, nevermind. Paul Roberts?
I don't know where to begin. All I have is for meaningful dialogue between the residents. I've been asking since December for a fifteen minute, uh, private conversation with Robert Tompkins to discuss the advertising budget and the deficit. And yes, I believe both of them are in, I believe they're current when we're in the deficit. Uh, the budget shows on page twenty nine, uh, the council claims to grab at six and a half million dollars in grants received this past year. And I'm asking for the township to post receipts of those grants on the township website so that we can see them. Without receipt of those grants, the township would deficit or give a deficit. This year's budget, uh, after score, our assumes a million dollar grant to the road and bridge fund, a five million dollar grant to the justice. Uh, the residents would appreciate a receipt of those grants when they come here, so we don't have to get into heated arguments like this. I guess if there's one thing that the press wants to take from this comment, it's taxation of representation tyranny. Uh, I wish that, uh, other people had asked during budget comments about what I think is the advertising part. Turns out it's photography and printing. Uh, last year, three thousand eight hundred dollars was budgeted for that purpose. The township spent a hundred seventy eight thousand dollars. This year, uh, in the proposal, uh, photography and printing goes up to two hundred eighty seven thousand dollars. How many of those are billboards, and how many, uh, flyers of supervisor's picture? Now, how many is, why aren't questions like this answered? It would be so simple to answer a question about the advertising budget before you heat it up to boiling point. I could go on, but I encourage supervisor, finance director, other department heads to contact me personally. You all have my heart. I have nothing to say, busy saying.
Jennifer Roberts. Uh, this is Naomi LaPresta. Sorry, apologies.
She gave us all these numbers. I would like for you to reprint each of them so that we can see them here. What you have right now is not all that's in there. Maybe please have another reprint of the budget. Is it possible to get a reprint of the budget? Just because I'm stupid straight up, let's get a reprint of the budget. The budget, if I can reprint, I'll say it's a red four. Please, right now, we got low papers with our budget numbers on it. If I could reprint that, please. And how long will it take to get it?
Alright, does that conclude your comment? Does that con- does that conclude your comment? Okay, while y'all doing that, you done? Okay, you done? Alright, you got another minute? You got one minute left. Robert, this is our board meeting, you can have a seat. The next name I cannot make out is Dee. First initial Dee.
I'd like to ask a question, I don't know if this is the timeframe to do it.
Can you pla- please, um, state your name?
Janam T. I have heard, I've not seen for myself, I don't know, that there is a, what I would consider a rogue vehicle being paid for by the township, electric BMW. And I want to know what that budget took last year? And is it getting to 2025 budget? And who is it for? And what does that person actually put the budget? That he or she needs that kind of vehicle?
Alright, is that it? Are you done? Are you done? Are you done, ma'am?
Okay, whoever Chris gives.
Unfortunately cannot, because just as some of the other residents stated, I mean, we see this budget that, I mean, I hate to say, but might as well have been done in crayon. There's numbers, but there's nothing that backs them up. What is the question? And that's the question, and I mean, the other trustees will kind of see that, you know, when I make a motion, or when I'm, so I'm trying to stop things from working, people getting fed, so we just want to know what the hell is in here.
I want to say that I would gladly commend the supervisor, if I actually believed something to be false. I'm not trying to cause any confusion or anything, but there's a lot of smoke going around. There's a crack. I love Thornton Township, I've been here about 26 years now. I like to stay here, but I want, and I know that, although my supervisor probably did some things that he shouldn't do, and we didn't know about. But there's a lot of confusion now, and as one speaker said before, I think that was Keith Price, that, uh, people are mixing up, uh, Dalton with the township, when it is mixed up. I think a prank card may have been used, uh, for some Dalton business. It's hard to have trust, because like, we're losing trust in that Supreme Court. We lose trust in this local leadership, because there are too many shady things that's been going on. I like what Jim said before, I think he's gone, we need to pray about it, because I, let me believe in life, I pray for this government, state government, county government, even the city of Chicago, because I have to go in and out of there. Township, village of Dalton, I pray that everything works well, because if it goes well, it's well for all of us. So, I, I, I like, what we're spending money on. I, I'd like a BMW, can I get one?
Uh, there are some, a lot of rumors going around, social media thinks about the township paid for, bought a BMW, a Range Rover, and maybe a Tesla, I wanted to let you know that that, that's not, that's not true. But when you think about it, we have not bought any BMWs. So, yeah, so, you finish that part.
Okay, stop, so he can, make his comment, make your comment, Robert, and go sit down. Robert, go ahead, make your comment. Y'all have to be quiet so y'all can hear him.
So, the BMW and the Range Rover is not purchased by Thornton Township.
Okay, okay, thank you, Robert. S something head. Swallowing. White horn head. Alright. Uh, Mr. Brown, Didaya.
I came here because I, I didn't know if the residents would be able to make it because of the sudden switch, but I'm glad to see they did. And I'm gonna let them express their grievances, because this is them. But I want a person to say, I do not appreciate the false police report. You are absolutely correct. This is Dr. King's dream, and we not be judged by the color of our skin, but by the content of our clothing. And the reason why you have so much heat is because when the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice. I can see nobody would do that. So, I'm gonna be very simple, because I'm here to back the township. I started with Andrew, you didn't handle that well. So now, I was with Dalton, and you ain't handling that well. And now, I'm with the township. So, these are my very simple words, eternal. Make sure you help them disciple what things are, because they like to play games. Get this, anybody who allows this mayor to steal anything else from these constituents, as an activist with a hell of a lot of resources, I, you will give her a raise, or you give her the ability to hide her dirty deeds, and you will gain my attention. And this is your official notice, that we will uncover every bit, because she's the one that made it so where there's some other people that still. So, you all are part of it. And then, the thing that I want to say, because I don't want time to go away, y'all really thought that these people were dumb. Well, now, they've had enough, and they're paying attention. And I want to thank the strong councilmen for making us aware of the things, including the fact that there is a difference between an audit that just simply verified payments and a forensic audit. I want to applaud residents who know the difference between a surplus because of your own innovative ability and a loan that they need to gotta pay down the line. And it's real convenient how y'all figure out or decide which questions y'all want to answer. Well, this was paid for, and this wasn't paid for, when it fits your narrative. But I don't have to spend a whole lot of time over here, because I'm gonna get here to do my investigation with my collaborative partners. And the questions that you won't answer, I got a strong feeling the FBI will.
Thank you, Angela. Donna Bee.
Trying to dictate us, you know, things. We are residents, we didn't even go through into that seat. So, we gotta understand that the people that offered, all the people that even her there. They ain't doing wrong, but they don't care. They don't care because they already have the money out. I love saying to everybody, if they have their money, but they don't care because they have to keep up the cost. They can't stop them now. What was you telling me? Everybody, you completely destroyed Dalton. And then you talk about the trees, why can't she pay for the trees? She's already there. She's already there. So, we tell them the budget for us is huge. We tell you our trees have been cut, it's my first. I know for you, daddy, it's my first. So, again, that's why, that Dalton is being paid for our trees. That's not going to happen. On our tax bill, and don't they pay Thornton Township a tree removal? It's paying the people that she been sending a tree removal. Who the hell are they?
Okay.
Who are they? Because why we paying now for trees? Why we paying something else? And that's why, who do we pay? Who do we pay for tree removal if we paying now? What is all that you want Dalton to be? So, we're the township's doing it, or Dalton's doing it? Because how many trees do we need to be removed?
Charles Rayburn. Okay, you don't have to pass, you signed in, if you want to speak, you can. But it's okay, you can always put your comment on record if you like.
It's still the resident, go ahead and talk.
Yeah. Okay, so, here we go, next person is? Alderman Wanda. David Williams. It, it don't work like that, we have a list, so you have to be called off the list if you sign in. No, it is the beginning, okay. Okay, guys, listen, listen, listen. Y'all want to come and make your rules, it don't go like that. We have a list, this is our actual board meeting. I tell you how it go, it's people that signed up, and they will be able to speak. You cannot, this is our board meeting now. So, it don't work like that, ma'am, ma'am, you cannot speak right now, you're following our list. Can, can you please remove from the podium so we call the next person? Can you please remove from the podium so we call the next person? It's not, it's not, it don't work like that. I tell y'all the rules, and y'all still don't want to listen. What's the next one? What's the next person? You got one more people on the list. Stephanie Wyder.
This gentleman said he knew this time, is that okay?
Stephanie, Stephanie Wyderman.
Was not available, but I came here, where was the list? Where was the list?
It don't work like that, you can't yield time. It does not work that, I tell y'all, can you please remove yourself so that we can keep going with our board meeting, please? It don't work that way, I just explained it to you. Can you please remove yourself from the podium, so I can see? Can we please remove yourself from here? Okay, you go out, you can get out. So, please, see, that's a fact, that's a fact.
I am supervisor, you thought that that was not part of the budget? Okay, I know it's the problem.
Okay, guys, guys. This is like, this is another option. Hello? And y'all want to do this, call the police. Call the police, call the police, call the police. Hey, you know, I'm just gonna explain in the thing. Y'all don't want to follow no rules. You have a list of people that signed in, let them speak in the board.
I just, uh, there wasn't a sheet available to me when I came in. So, that's not my fault, because I don't control the sheet. But what I would like to say, or ask, trustee Gonzalez, I'm sorry, but you don't, you my man. Perhaps, maybe you can answer my question. In January, when Keith Freeman and the super mayor went to Washington DC, and it came out in the media that it was paid for by Thornton Township, over $9,000. Do you have any knowledge of that? Because that's intermingling funds, because if it was a mayor's conference for mayors only, it should have not been paid for by Thornton Township. And I'm asking Thornton Township supervisor, along with Keith Freeman, to pay that money back, because those are our tax dollars. Pay that money back to Thornton Township. And I would like that matter clerk to go on record.
Alright, next person. Stephanie Weiderman.
Hello, everyone, how are you? I just wanted to point out a couple things. First of all, um, the mental health referendum. It was so important, mental health is a priority here in Thornton Township, it always has been. Those services were provided at no cost to the residents, all the years I worked here. And now, they got to talk about a budget that didn't include mental health at all. But she wanted us to pay more taxes for it, and I find that very interesting. The other thing is, I'm wondering, Robert, if the, the salaries have gone down in ZAP, because you guys were about to vote on a bid for contractors to buy the office. So, that could be the reason maybe why. So that, the reason may be why. And then, the four point nine nine percent that you keep talking about, nobody wants their, their taxes raised. However, I'm sure that most of the people in this room are well aware of what these salaries do, whether you think they are or not. Our issue is not the four point nine nine percent, our issue is giving it to you.
Tasha Holland.
With me again. My record is Tasha Holloway. And I would like to say that I am utterly appalled at this administration, as I paid good money for taxes in Thornton Township. Our Thornton Township supervisor is a master manipulator. If she's gonna call names, then I'm gonna call her, I heard, master manipulator, narcissist, and gaslighter. And I will, I'm gonna say this, but I will now, my son, my son, she asked him to host a dance camp, which he did, and she offered him two hundred dollars, and he didn't get it. And because of this man, Jelena Brown, and my son, got his two hundred dollars. And I guess she's gonna say no comment to that as well. And I also noticed that since I've been speaking publicly about the things that I'm sick and darn tired of, all of a sudden, I'm getting these darn own calls from nowhere about credit cards that I did not have. They're reciting my license plate to me, as well as my address. And who knows where I have been late, and dalting with the police running my license plate illegally. And they even made reference to a police report that I filed in Calumet City. How the hell does someone, a bill collector, ask you about a police report that you filed regarding identity theft? That is retarded, ridiculous, insane, and just as ignorant as this dog. On first ten pages of a hundred and forty-seven that we were given, we should have been given all of the hundred and forty-seven pages that was paid for this building. And this administration has ink, they have printing, they don't just supposed to print us out what they want us to see. Print out the whole thing, let them see what you're hiding. Let them see, not the editing, but the audited receipts.
Dennis Thomas.
Uh, they said everything, for me.
Um, the last one is, I don't know how to pronounce. Right, do we need an ambulance? No? All right, all right, they have public money, they have so.
Jesus is born in presentation, you know, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Can you say your name? Um, again, like I said before, I don't know what you're speaking about. Um, I'm very upset about the agenda, knowing that the agenda of the board meeting. But I did get to see it on the minutes, that you guys posed and all that, the agenda. One of the things that really bothered me is, why are we contracting out a long, long period for seniors? A contracted service? When ZAP program, and I'm gonna say this is ZAP, it's the one who put the program in there, that was for teenagers, to connect with the seniors, and to have jobs. There's a nineteen year old kid in Lansing, who says he can't get a job anywhere, and he wants to work. But, I can't direct him to go to this CAT program, because you're going to go comment today that a long service, that you're gonna probably pay three or four bucks, and you're not doing it. When I grew up, I got a paper route, they took paper routes away from kids. So, I learned where an ethic was at paper route. Now you're taking the work ethic of the teenagers to perform the ZAP program to learn how to do healthcare, which, there's a lot of different things that they can learn. They learn to, uh, the work ethic that we definitely need in the world today. And, and so, what you get interviewed is, I never saw any recruitment. Why did you run and go on to all the different municipalities and say, hey, do you have any teenagers that is available to do the ZAP program? And they available to do that, I have not seen that. But, there is something I do wanna add, and hopefully I'm on here, is, where did you advertise the bids for this? Because, under township code, M O I General Assembly, sixty-five thousand dollars, and help your party. It says, figures after advertising for bid, at least once in the newspaper published within the town. Let's see, Lansing Journal, and the shop, and the shop board is, but not how many people get the shop board anymore. And then, if there is no newspaper published in township, then you can go to outside sources like Chicago Tribune, uh, and some other type of places, where did you advertise? Because if you wouldn't have done that, I would have known a couple long services that would have been one of the bidders. And they would have gotten to it. But, overall, my issue is, why are we not helping the teenagers get jobs?
That's the youth program.
Yes, but, I get it, you, you did also increase the budget to, um, the CAT program, with four, uh, four hundred and forty million dollars, uh, which is great. Four hundred and forty million, uh, two hundred and three, whatever. Whatever, four thousand, I'm sorry, thousand, which I have nothing to say. No, I think, you know what, this is my life.
Okay, that's your time now.
But anyways.
That's your time now, that's your three minutes, thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda, uh, report and presentation, we don't have any.
Good afternoon, everyone. Please allow me to stand, thanks. I mean, I've, I've been here all day, and I've heard everybody talk, scream, mother. I, I'd like to be afforded my opportunity to just stand, thank you. And, first of all, I wanna be giving out to God, I think that's more important, uh, He's the head of my life, and to this body, this board, members, staff, and community. I continue to pray for this township, and pray that all healing needed takes place. I want to thank the gentleman over there for his comment about the fact that, when there's issues, it's never too late, never too late. First, let me say, that public trust is the most important aspect of what we do here, as elected official. And any loss of it is a great concern, and that concern must be there for everyone. But once again, please, allow me this time, thanks, okay? Our obligation to the community is to fight like heads, right now, to make things right. There's no question, that we have some challenges that we need to deal with. Leadership, leadership requires many qualities. Some very important ones are wisdom, good character, and good judgment. And we must, and you must, to demand this of all of us. I have no problem with that, none at all. I'm making that demand, and I'm saying that it must be done now, not later, now. It's been alluded that we are inappropriate action here at, uh, doing township. Things that's not in the best interest of this entire township. And let me just say this to everyone here. There were more people here earlier. Some of them, but people don't come out for nothing. Okay, whether you heard something, a rumor, whether you heard something that's a fact, whatever the case might be, people came out because they are concerned. I have no problem whatsoever with that. I have no problem with respect, because I'm a respectful person. So I'm sitting here, I'm gonna give everybody their respect, but I've seen a lot of disrespect from wherever. Back in, somebody spoke, I was raised, my grandmother in the grave. But I believe she'd come out and whoop my, if I let somebody talk, or somebody's talking and I'm trying to talk over. We cannot teach our kids that, we can't keep doing that either. But, not to, um, digress on that. I just wanna say that, I never wanna see anybody, nor myself, in trouble in their life. And at sixty-seven years age, yeah, I look good, right? But I am sixty-seven years old, my days left are what they are. And I won't be spending them constantly dealing with anything wrong being done. It ain't gonna happen, okay? You could count on me, but I'm gonna work to improve what's going on around here. Like the gentleman said over there, it's not too late. We must keep that in mind. Going forward, and I've already had this conversation, we must institute, we must. Not we should, not maybe, we must institute guardrails here in this township. We have to have committees that are gonna be overseeing, not running, because people got, everyone here had opportunity to, from these departments. You come up to this township, you come up to this township, and you see programs running. I don't think I used to get along with Tamika. Okay, but she laughing over there, but every time I come up here, and I go past that general assistance office, all over here is people, names being called, and they being called in there, they're getting served. I continue to see all of those things that's going on in the senior service department, where I go there and put, uh, managers so eloquently to, uh, elaborate how many meals were fed to people. Yes, we have a problem right now recruiting for the lawn care service, but that's a service that we also provide, and there are people out cutting lawns right now. So we need, but we need to get it straight, we need that opportunity, because one more time, it's not too late. But don't guardrails, they need to be put in place for the finance department, for the budget, for human resources, for all of our resident services, whether it's senior services, youth service, special needs, lawn care, general assistance, you name it. We need to put guardrails, we need to have committee assignments, and we need to be overseeing as trustees. Because, what has not happened, what has not happened in the month, is the trustees here, one, two, and on the other side, three, four, we run this township. And we need to get things in order now, because the supervisor and the staff work for these trustees. And these trustees work for the community. We work for the community, and we need to do our job. It is not too late. No, not done. There's people hollering, there's people down here hollering too. I mean, it is what it is, yeah, so, let me continue by saying that I pledge, it's my pledge right now, to sit on the finance budget committee with trustee Gonzalez. I haven't seen eye to eye with him, that's why we ever we're here right now. I haven't seen eye to eye with him for the last couple of years. But I pledge to sit on the committee with him. I pledge to firmly oversee and look at things to allow us to be on one accord. What good is it for us to have a township board, when half or three quarters are voting one way, and one other is not? He's already expressed why he has some issues, we need to work to figure those things out. I'm willing to do that, I'm willing to do that, and we need to make it happen. So I wanna express to the residents here apologies, not just to the residents here, but the residents period. My apologies for anything that has been going on in this township, that shouldn't we will get it right. There's no question, we have to get it right. And one more time, I might say it again, but it's not too late, it's not too late. So please know my request for committee assignments go to the trustees with the greatest sincerity, as we owe the community our duty to move forward in a positive manner. If there's some shortcomings on behalf of this supervisor, people have challenges, we need to correct it. We need to correct it, I acknowledge in that. This board needs to understand our functions, and the supervisors, I said, and the staff work for us. I'm gonna say it one more time, the supervisor and the staff work for this board, and this board works for the community. Help pay your taxes, though. So, I don't know if Ms. Stiles is still here, but she kinda stole my thunder a little bit. But co-megaling the funds, that's a serious issue. It's a serious issue, and any aspect of this must be addressed and eradicated. And those responsible must own up and be accountable. I don't care if we gotta have restitution made, or whatever the heck it is, but that is something that cannot happen, and going forward, it will not happen. Please know, that I respect this community, I've lived in this community since nineteen eighty-nine. I love this community. And the things that have been going on, I can be honest with everybody in here. I thought about selling my house, leaving, all kind of things, because we should not have this kind of turmoil, we should not have it. And those that start rumors, and cause trouble, notice, you're part of the problem, and it's never gonna get corrected with that. It's never gonna get corrected when you starting rumors, making false in you and those, things of that nature. We need to deal with the serious issues that we got, and that's it, all the rest, stop it. Please pray my strength, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve minutes of the board meeting held on May fourteen, twenty twenty-four at six PM, is there a motion? It's been motioned, it is third second. I've been motioned a second, please hold on. Trustee Jones? Trustee Gonzalez? Gray Everett? Trustee Carlisle, supervising, and your motion passed. Next on the agenda is our business approval of videos, is there a motion to approve the general fund videos? Is there a motion? Is there a second? It's been motioned a second, any discussion? Call it on. Trustee Carlisle? Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Jones? Supervising here, motion passed. Is there a motion to approve the general fund, the general assistant fund? Is there a motion? Is there a second? It's been motioned a second, any discussion? Call it on. Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Jones? Supervising here, motion passed. Supervisor here, motion pass. Is there a motion to approve the running bridge fund? Is there a second? It's been motioned second, any discussion? Call her on. Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Carlisle? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Jones? Supervisor here, motion pass. Next is resolutions, proclamations, and ordinances. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash zero zero seven, approving equipment purchase and installation agreement with Titan Trucks Manufacturing LLC? Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve for the truck? All right, is there a second? A second, any discussion? Call her on. Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Carlisle? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Jones? Supervisor here. Next on the agenda is adoption of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget and appropriation ordinance, twenty-four dash zero zero two for the board and township general assistant fund. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve the budget? He said he motioned to table. It's a motion in second, type, call her on. You're voting on the motion to table. Trustee Jones? Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Carlisle? What she said? She said yes? Supervisor here.
Don't let her take you to jail.
If there's a smut, it should be discussed on a mic, right?
Okay, guys, all right, now we moving on, we moving on, but look, y'all cannot do that, this is our board meeting. Our board meeting, so our board meeting, we talk amongst each other as well, you can go drink the either. But you cannot interrupt, you cannot, you cannot interrupt, you cannot interrupt. You cannot interrupt. Okay, we not gonna move forward till y'all be quiet. So be quiet, and when the county come back, we'll let you finish our votes.
All right, next, can I have a motion for adoption of twenty twenty-four slash twenty twenty-five budget and appropriation ordinance, twenty-four dash zero zero three for the township general fund. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Okay, it's a motion to table, is there a second? It's been motioned in second, call her on. Yes, the general fund, trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Jones? Trustee Carlisle? Trustee Gray Everett? Supervisor? Motion passes. Next on the agenda, is there a motion to approve a warning that half lawn mowing and maintenance services, requests for proposals to the successful bidder, the rarest for season lawn care service, into authorized for township officials and the township attorney to negotiate contract consistent with this order. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? All right, it's been motioned, is there a second? It's been motioned second, any discussion?
I had concerns about it too, because I think it's a great program for young people, but I did talk to Stan Brown, who's over that program, and what he said is, they only have nine employees right now cutting grass, so they do need the help, because I wanted to know if Zapp was gonna be, or half was gonna be replaced, or if, you know, it was gonna be like a work together kind of thing. And he said right now it's just supplemental, and they do really need the help, but they need somebody that can come in and kind of commit to it, because people are all over the place, and residents do complain about the high grass and about not getting service on time. So I think it is very important for us to be able to supplement the program until we can get young people in. So if you do know anybody that needs a job, or wants a summer job, have them apply, because we do need the assistance right now, because that, or have them apply.
Please let me say this as well, because we both had conversation with Mr. Brown about the lawn care service. One of the more important things is the fact that, and I heard the young lady when she talked about recruitment and things of that nature, those are very pertinent issues. But the one thing that continues to happen that we need to be cognizant of is the fact that it's just too many of these young kids that are not passing these drug tests. And two years ago, I knew that we had an issue where somebody, what, did he cut off his foot or something? Or his toe, or his finger? You know, I'm not saying that he was under the influence, but the fact that I'm out here is, we need to make sure that the right things are being done, or we hire people for something like that, cutting grass, putting a hand on lawn mowers, weed whackers, things of that nature. So we are having that as a challenge, and that's something that Mr. Brown's steady working on. So please give us that opportunity as well, thanks.
All right, in a discussion, please call her on. What else you got?
My concern is, the papers were entered into this agreement, but it also says that it's to be negotiated. How do you enter into agreement if you don't know what the law says?
If I can clarify, please, shh. So, it was awarded at thirty-five dollars per cut, and so the things that need to be negotiated, because the contractor did not present an actual contract, and it's like indemnification, insurance, and other items to protect the village, I'm sorry, to protect the township. So because of that, we need to have a contract that lays all that stuff out. And if you notice, it does say, "Consistent with the award", and the award is at thirty-five dollars per cut. So the price will be thirty-five dollars per cut that will be in the contract. It's honestly just all the other legalese as it relates to contract cancellation, termination. No, they presented insurance, if you look in the board packet, the stuff that was presented, they did present insurance. He is, all right, call her on.
Hold on, he got a board meeting, hold on, we have an actual board meeting going on right now. Let me finish, let me finish. Trustee Jones? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Gray Everett? You said yes? Trustee Carlisle? Trustee Carlisle? Supervisor here, motion pass. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? It's been motioned second, call her on. Trustee Jones? Trustee Carlisle? Trustee Gray Everett? Trustee Gonzalez? Supervisor here, motion pass, four thirty. All right, thank you, I'm coming out.